All right, I'll call a meeting to order. This is like a movie production there, eh? You're on. We'll start with our land acknowledgement, that we acknowledge the homeland of the many diverse First Nations of many people whose ancestors have walked this land since time immemorial. We are grateful to work, live, and learn on the traditional territory of Treaty VIII. And we'll move down to the adoption of the agenda. And with this one, we have a new system that Rod wants us to try to speed up the process. I'm not sure. We'll see how it works. Now, the process is we just go through and if there... Each councillor will say if there's an item that they want to... Item or items that they would wish to debate. And if there's any items that are not on the list, then we will make a motion and pass them all at once. Now, there's a few things that will be exempt. And one of them would be like if we have bylaws that you can't just ignore those. You have to address them. The other exception... You know, we can't exempt closed sessions either, obviously. And the third one would be councillor updates. And so those would be ones that we cannot go by. So I'll start on my left with councillor Stan House. And just to say, is there items in here that you wish to debate?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be... That would be 8.1.
All right. That's the only thing, everything else you're good with?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. I have council... You what?
I have none.
None? Okay.
I have a question. So what happens to the reports to be... To be sold?
We still do our reports, yeah.
And the hearings and the delegation piece where we... I thought I read somewhere that it... I thought I read somewhere that we were going to debate something. Was that what you were talking about here?
Yes. Now, we have as a follow-up from previous meetings, we had the delegations that came in.
That's what I read. So it said that it doesn't give us time to be prepared. And I thought there was a... Something for us to debate there.
Okay, so you would like to talk about... It's the follow-up...
2.1.
6.1.
6.1, right? It's the business arising from the minutes? 6.1? Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, 6.1 and 8.1.
And 8.1, okay.
8.1.
8.1.
6.1 and 8.1.
All right. Yeah, that's kind of got to think about.
So maybe this is the mayor's thinking. So just so you know, the way the process is going to work then. So right now, if this were to close, the only two items that we would debate is 6.1 and 8.1. That means even the managers' updates would be passed. So they'd just be like the managers' updates that are in here, the peace officer, public works, et cetera. They would just... Piece of paper, is it? We've just got two items to deal with. So I'm just letting you know.
Well, throw 2.1. The delegation. I'm assuming that you have... That's not one we could skip, right?
Correct, yeah. We can't skip that.
Okay, all right, well...
So we have to do that one.
Okay.
And, you know, I was just... Because it's new, I'm just going to put my thoughts out. Like I had some comments on, you know, public works, but not necessarily questions. And I did have some... I guess I'd like to just talk a little bit about... Again, I had questions on our CAO's report on action list, so...
Yeah.
So then we talk, well...
Okay, well, I had 13.1.
And 4.1? So just trying to... 13.1?
Well, again, I'm just trying to get my head around this new system. I don't... I don't really need to... It's not big questions. It was more just, yeah. So just a point of clarity then. I said none because I am uncomfortable with the recommendations made. That's what we're talking about, right?
So basically, right now, if this were to pass the way it is...
Yeah.
You guys would make a motion approving 3.1, which is the fire report, 3.2 peace officer report, 4.1 public works report, minutes 5.1, 5.2. Yeah, all those would get approved in one motion.
Okay.
Then the chair would say, okay, we're on to 6.1. So that's the first item that wasn't approved. Would that help?
Well, we had the delegation, but he's...
Oh, sorry, delegation. Sorry, yes, sorry. The delegation never is exempted, so... Or pardon.
Okay, so has everybody got their head around? They're all right to give this a whirl?
Yep.
All right. And so with that, we'll make the motion then that we only debate 2.1, 6.1, 8.1, and 13.1, and 16, which is one of those ones that we don't miss, and 17, so our confidential items.
Just a point of order. We haven't adopted the agenda yet.
No, well, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Yeah, you're right. Maybe we need to back it up one step further. Okay, yeah. I'm trying to get my head around... You're right, Donna. Yeah, thank you for that. Is there anybody that... I'm trying to get this new system and figure it out. But is there anything we need to add or delete from the agenda?
I was just going to make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
All right. Any... No? All in favor? Thank you for that. Okay, so going back then, we'll make the motion. We need a motion to accept. Is that what we need, Rod?
That's correct. So each one, so a motion to accept...
3.1?
Yep, the recommendations. So it'd be something like that the recommendation and the following reports be approved. 3.1, 3.2.
Okay, I'll make that motion. We're going to approve 3.1, 3.2, 4.1, 5.1, 5.2. And that's it. All in favor? All right, so now we're moving on to our scheduled delegation. I notice Mr. Salisbury is not here, but we have his letter here. Now, normally, we wait for the next meeting to address these sorts of things. But is there a question that anybody has? Because maybe we can get it clarified before we move on. Yes?
Is he aware that we start a meeting since 6:30 now?
Rod, did you talk to him?
So I attempted the call and just got a voicemail. So I can't respond. So what that... What council can do is postpone this item. And if he... Come Mr. Salisbury shows up by the time the agenda's done, we can, you know, you can just... It's called postponing. And then until later on in the agenda, and then you can deal with it then.
Councillor Eickel?
Then I will make the motion that we postpone this item until Mr. Salisbury shows up or the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Actually, sorry, it's tabled. Tabled.
Oh, tabled?
Tabled is the right one. Postpone is the next meeting.
Okay, well, I make the motion then that we table this item until Mr. Salisbury shows up or the end of the meeting. And should he show up, that we address him as soon as we're done with whatever current item we're on.
Okay, sounds good. All in favor? That's carried. So now, we're moving on then to... All the way down to 6.1. We're talking about our delegations from previous meetings. The first one, the previous delegation, was the AFPA or the Alberta Forest Products Association. And they had come to us, I guess, requesting a letter to be sent to the Alberta Utilities Board for utility rates. That was their biggest ask. And I know Rod has talked to them about, you know, really what was their biggest concerns. Because they talked about managing species for different... You know, not just one species, but multiple species. And they were looking at more secure wood supplies and stuff too, or building, higher building. So there was a few things that they had pitched in there. But the only one that they were really concerned with was the utility rates. So just ask if anybody is... Where they're at with that? Are we comfortable sending a letter to the Alberta Utilities Board asking for them to further review those utility rates and the impact it would have on the forest companies in our region? I see nods. Anybody want to make a motion on that? Okay, Mister... Councillor Dunn? There is nothing in here. You're going to have to...
Free flow?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we draft a letter to send to the Alberta Utilities Board. And in order to... In order to... Address the cost that would be required for the Alberta lumber... What, association?
The AFPA.
AFPA, yeah. Or more their members. Just the members, the mills. Okay. To, yeah, to reduce the cost if possible for the members of the AFPA. So that's on good? Okay, no, that's good. Really good. And I guess, yeah. Okay, is there any other debate on that one? Everybody's all right? All in favor? That's carried. Peace library system was just an information update, so I don't think we need anything there. The RCMP was just an information update too, if I remember right. And Barry Schakow...
Sergeant as well.
Yeah.
Chris's name.
Yeah. And with Barry, he had some elections concerns. I think we've already addressed those. So I don't think that we need to debate that unless... Anything more? Nope? All right, so seeing nothing more there for 6.1. We'll move on to 8.1. Can I get a motion on this one?
I will make the motion that council approve the application to install the proposed mural on the Canada Post Highbury Community Hub building located at 4801 52nd Street.
All right. All right, and I know there were some people that wanted to debate this, so we'll start with you, Mister Eickel. Councillor Eickel.
Ah, you can go heavy on the mystery. I don't have a problem with this. I'm just wondering, why the heck is this even coming here? They don't give our permission to paint their building? And I see that McKenzie wants us to... Like this is just red tape. Right? Like this should just... Hey, we're going to paint their building. Done.
So through your worship... So based on my discussion with MMSA, I guess our land use bylaw is... Doesn't deal with these types of things. And therefore, it is something that needs to be approved. So what they would like to do to reduce red tape in the future is to actually put some amendments, propose some amendments, bring them forward to council for their consideration to adopt and insert in their land use bylaw. So it's... Yeah, so that's what we're proposing in the second motion right now. It's, you know, they're the experts. And they've indicated that this is something that, you know, the land use bylaw doesn't address. And, you know, if we want this to streamline this process or to make it a little bit, maybe not coming through council, maybe through a different mechanism, we should make amendments to land use bylaw.
Can we do... They can... So with my initial one there, can we just tack on the other thing to...
Well, we can vote on this and then we can go to the second motion. Because they might be separate and people might feel one way for one and not for the other. So let's keep them separate. Let's keep them separate, just to make sure that it's clear.
Go ahead, and then I will.
Go ahead.
So exactly what you said. So I like this mural. I think it's pretty... No objections. However, a blanket approval to murals? What if it's, you know... Murals represent the town of Highbury in some ways. That's our... What if there is a messaging issue with the future one? This one I love. Happy with it. But what if, right? If we give a blanket approval, we don't see it? We don't know what it is? We don't know... You know? You're okay with it?
We had a pink building with a happy face on it for a long time.
No.
And I don't care. It was their building.
So what if there's something pseudo-offensive to some community or some faction of the population? And we now, like Highbury, has this mural? Just a thought, that's my thought. I'm happy with this mural. Perfectly happy with it. A blanket to change the... To change the bylaw, land use bylaw, to include wall murals? I don't know. I'd like to see if anyone else has any thoughts. But that would be my issue, just giving a blanket approval.
I'm excited to hear what Judy has to say.
Councillor Stanhouse?
So I'm on the same train of thought. Each one should be proposed before us. And because you open it up so everybody can paint whatever they want on their buildings, on their houses, on their fences, I would also like to see... First of all, I'm getting ahead of myself. Who asked for this? The information doesn't say... Does Canada Post... Does Canada Post know about this? Do they want it?
Yes, this is part of the whole Canada Post renovations. So the owner of the building isn't Canada Post, but the landowner is supportive of it. So in the whole application process, we need a letter from the landowner because it's actually the tenant that's supporting this cost. And the landowner has located. So...
Okay, so the land... The owner of the building has located. But is it... Canada Post is holding the lease on it? Like I'm still confused. Who wants this? Is it someone or Canada Post?
It's Canada Post.
Okay.
So they're... Yeah, they're entity. It wasn't the landowner originally proposing it.
Okay, and getting back now to... You know, each one should come before us. And I would like to see an expiry date on it. That... So they put up a mural. In three years, it's all faded or graffiti or whatever. There needs to be an expiry date that either they paint over it or upkeep it like a tattoo or whatever, that they can't just put it there and leave it there. Kind of a contract where it has an expiry date. That in three years, it has to be touched up, redone, painted over, whatever, so that we don't have these faded murals. And Canada... I don't... I'm not speaking badly about Canada Post, but that post office has been there for how many years? And they just did an upgrade now. That's why I'm looking for an expiry date on it.
Okay, just, I want to bring this into the first... The first motion here was, does anybody have an objection to install the mural on the building? Because we're moving into sort of second... Or I guess yours is related to that, is the timeframe, right?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I was moving ahead to sort of, you know, saying all of these would have a timeframe, but not just this specific one. So sorry about that. Yeah, let's go to the...
Yeah, so instead of calling it an expiry date, can we call it a maintenance plan? Or something that... Because expiry, it basically indicates to me that you're taking that down or this is in need. But they have to have, when they put something up, they need to also provide a maintenance plan with it. That would make sense to me.
So I'm just going to ask a question. I understand what you're talking about. But I guess, where else do we do that? So people put up signs, just business signs.
Government signs.
Well, so more like business signs along our main street or on the top of their building. And do we ever put limitations on that? Because over time, those signs get old and start showing where. So I'm just bringing it up as a comment. So anything else that we approve? You know, people's signs or painting of their buildings? Because some people, right, haven't painted their buildings for a long time. Are we going to start putting limitations on... I mean, this is a stretch. I get it. But you're... If somebody's building a building, okay, we want to see their maintenance plan on that building. Because somebody's building a new building and they put... They're painting the concrete block. Are we going to ask them that they have to put a maintenance program together so that in 10 years, they have to repaint that cinder block? Is there much of a difference?
I think we're only talking about murals in this case. We're not talking about somebody's... What they're... How they're painting their building once they've completed it and stuff like that. If there's a mural that is, you know, losing its quality, it does bring down... It brings down the value all around there, right? Whereas if it's a house, people expect wear and tear in a house. People expect wear and tear on a business, playing business. And the business owner does what they can to maintain that so that they draw people in, right? I think, for me, this is specific to murals in our community.
So maybe just one more question then. So what would be... So let's just say, take five years or three years, they'd have to have a maintenance plan. What happens if they don't stick to that maintenance plan? Like I guess, what repercussions would we as a municipality have on an entity that has a mural that doesn't meet our standard?
Councillor Stanhouse?
Well, if we're changing our land use bylaw, that will be included in that. Because if we're opening up our land use bylaw and we're making changes, now's the time to make the changes.
Good. Councillor Danaka?
I was just going to say, in regards to the maintenance, we have an unsightly bylaw. I mean, if their mural is unsightly or whatever, we have that option. So to ask them to have some type of, you know, maintenance plan to deal with that, I think is unfair to ask that. And like I said, we have the unsightly bylaw that is our option. If somebody's mural is peeling or faded, we can address it with them saying, hey, this is, you know, this is an unsightly thing. What are your plans to improve this?
Councillor Stanhouse?
I know I'm picking up a lot of my turns. The problem with calling it an unsightly is this is a piece of art. And everyone views art differently. So to call it... For it to fall under the unsightly, I don't think that would be fair. Because what I see as art is not the same as other people would see as art. So I think it needs to be in its own category.
I'll give my opinion on this and that. I think this would be an extra... I mean, this is fantastic that they want to go a step beyond. And then we're putting extra... Extra rules and red tape in front of them. And I don't think that we should be... I think we should be, you know, happy that they want to do it. If this is a company that's going the extra mile to make their building look better, they're going to keep their building looking better. You know, and it may get a little washed out, but we have homes with a... There's a house with a mural on it, right? And they went through that effort to do that mural and they will touch it up, they, you know, if it's not looking good. So for me, they've gone the extra mile. I don't feel that we should be putting extra requirements on them. I agree, it might get a little run down. And if we do, we could, you know, the town could say it might be getting unsightly and we could deal with it. But even if it was a little worn out, it would still look better than just a plain wall that's starting to peel. That's my opinion. So anybody else on whether we need a maintenance plan? Councillor Dunn?
And it's just a closing, like for me is... I was listening to that, but I had no in reading this because I'm along those lines in the belief that a business will have the integrity to maintain, especially if they want to draw in customers or keep their customers happy. And, yeah, so now I'm torn.
Councillor Danaka?
I understand where councillor Stanhouse is coming from. But for me, the end of the day, this is another one of these issues that we overthink. We project, saying, okay, what about this? What about this? And to me, I honestly have... I honestly have no issue with the mural or anybody wanting a mural. I understand as well in regards to something tasteful because obviously, we don't necessarily want, as an example, swastikas on the side of a building just for that connotation. But right now, with the issue that option one that we're debating, I think everybody has made their voices heard that they have no problem with that. So I think we can go forth and pass that motion. Amendments to the land use bylaw? I'm... I mean, that's for another discussion.
Councillor initiation?
My initial, I guess, question was answered because I wasn't really all that clear on who and what. So that makes it much more clear to me that it's kind of the Post that's looking for that. So that clarified that. I was... A question in my mind was with the upkeep. Because I, you know, I'm not being loathsome in murals and that. I kind of wondered how long or what the longevity of it would be. And it's quite complex. So if it did start fading, that it would take probably a fair bit to do something with it. I'm sure now in technology, I'm sure there's ways to preserve them probably even more maybe than there was, you know, 20, 30 years ago, I'm thinking. So... What was my other thought there? I guess that was basically it. So I didn't... I don't have a problem with it. I think it would really enhance the empty wall in the parking lot. And it's something that would be fairly visible. And that's what really definitely does. As far as anything else with it, I think really, you know, to be honest, if Canada Post is looking at going to the effort of doing that, also with the fact that they did just upgrade the post office area, this is really their showcase. Like this is the first one in Canada. So, you know, I think they're quite proud of it. I think they're trying to enhance that. So I think it is quite important. And important to them also for the upkeep of it. And I agree with the other bylaw on that. That's probably another discussion.
Okay, so specific on this, we heard one comment they would like to have a maintenance plan put on it. But right now, the motion is just for the approval of it unless there was a friendly amendment to it. And that was... But... So I'll throw it over to you. Are you happy with where your motion is? Okay? So with that, we'll vote on it. And it was just to give them a permission to install it? All in favor? Okay, it is carried. So now we move on. Okay, it is carried, so now we move on, we had another option there. Uh, and, uh, anybody want to make a motion on this one? No, Counselor Stanhouse?
The council direct administration to research and present amendments to the land use bylaw that would allow for.
Wall murals. Or you got others that want?
I don't wanna say that, I wanna say specific requests for wall murals. I don't want, sorry, I, I wanna take that motion back.
Sorry, so I'm not sure what your motion is?
I don't wanna blanket statement saying that, yeah, go ahead, have wall murals.
This is just.
It, this is to research the ability to put in wall murals. So let's start it there, and then if we can lead somewhere else, you can do a friendly amendment.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Okay, so we'll open this one up. Just some, go, go ahead, Counselor Stanhouse.
So this comes back to our very first motion, which confused me, and I should've got it clear before we voted. It's already in conflict with our land use bylaw, but we just approved it?
Land use bylaw is silent, and so, basically, like, there's, there's no rules governing it, so council approved it. And so now, the second motion is, um, if approved as written, administration will go back, take a look at some things, and propose them to council to say, is this something you'd like to incorporate into our land use bylaw? Like, around the topic of wall murals, so I'm assuming it'll be something like, you know, like tasteful, and those types of things, I know tasteful is a subject.